I'd like to call to order please the Board of Education meeting for October 25th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. If everyone could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is our first opportunity, please, for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in Policy 167.3, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. I am seeing no student forms. I am seeing one parent form, Ben Goodman. And Ben, I'm pretty sure you know how that works, so whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for inviting me to speak. About two to three weeks ago, I was asked to participate and create a video about the past, present, and future of our amazing Special Education Department. Tonight, you'll watch the first part of this video. This in no way is what the final version will look like. Please be patient and understand that the world of special education is very fast-paced, fluid, and high-energy. The final product will truly be something our district will be proud of. I want to thank Anna Britnell, Kevin Musson, and Monica Ellis for trusting me to create this video. I also want to thank our amazing special educators for the job that you do for our kids and the compassion you show. You all are truly doing right by kids. As a parent of two kids with IEPs who are currently receiving special education services in Celine area schools, this district is what parents' dreams are made of. My kids are thriving, and it's because of the amazing staff, curriculum, and services you provide. At the beginning of last year, my daughter faced a one-grade-level reading deficit. I'm proud to say she is now reading slightly above grade level. Last year, my son struggled to transition to the middle school, and his anxiety was at an all-time high. He now walks into SMS like he owns the place. And this is all because of you, the Board, the foundation and amazing educators, that he has access to particular curriculums that will help him through puberty and into adulthood. He is making friends, expanding his sense of humor, and socializing with peers like he's never done before. And did I mention friends? Yes, I said friends. Not many people know what it's like to be a parent of a child with autism spectrum disorder, the fears we have, the unknowns we can never find answers for, or the negative comments we receive throughout this community. However, Celine area schools and the Special Education Department has always validated our feelings and supported us above and beyond. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Seeing no other public comment, just in response to previous public comment, we always thank you for emails to sasboard@celineschools.org or through the Let's Talk app on our website. Moving on to our agenda, I'd like to please, oops, items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, McVeigh.
Second, Garvey.
Okay. Michael, thank you. Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to our student showcase for this evening, Students Against Racism Club. If I can have our students come up. Ashna, am I pronouncing that correctly? Ashna, Sia, all right, excellent, and Carson. All right, whenever you're ready. Just make sure the, perfect. And the mic should have the green light.
Hello, everyone. So, we are Students Against Racism. My name's Ashna.
My name's Sia.
I'm Carson.
And we want to talk to you today about some of the things that we do and just in general, how we feel like we make a difference in the community. So, who are we and what do we do? We're a student-led organization under the advisor Ms. Sparks, who can't be here today, but she gives her hellos. And basically, what we do is we try to create a more inclusive environment here at Celine, not only just in the high school, but in the middle school and elementary schools as well. It's our goal to make every student feel comfortable in the district, and that means everybody, not just people of color. We stand for inclusivity in general. Some of the activities that we do, along with monthly activities such as readings and posters and announcements, is we also do special activities that we're going to be talking about a little bit later. But one of the things we do is monthly activities. Now, this is just a small slide describing some of the monthly activities that we do. So first, we like to do posters that highlight some things about certain months, like, for example, September 15th to October 15th was Hispanic Heritage Month, and for that, we wanted to make posters and make a slideshow and put it across, put it up on the, sorry, put it up, projected it over the lunchroom so that everyone could see it in the high school. So that was just something that we thought would bring attention to it. In the past, we've done announcements over the loudspeaker where we've tried to highlight important figures in each community. And yeah, we also have discussions inside our club in general, where we talk about current issues and in general, just things that we feel like should be addressed in the school district. So yeah.
One of the most important activities we do through our club is interrupter training. And basically, what interrupter training is, is it's a method to teach students how to confront others when they hear them say problematic comments that usually tend to be racist, which in our community, we've had a problem with in the past. So in our district, we use the CLARA method, which is a de-escalating method. We give students a chance to practice it in the club by putting them in groups of three, like we are here. One person will simulate being the perpetrator, and they'll simulate saying a comment that is problematic and students may have heard in the community. The second person will then be the interrupter, who practices responding to them using the steps of the CLARA method in order to get them to see why their comment may be problematic and just let them be aware. Our goal isn't necessarily to change their opinion. It's more education and planting those seeds of thought so that everyone in our community can be better educated overall. The third person serves as a listener, who listens to the exchange between the perpetrator and the interrupter and gives feedback at the end, because our goal is always for improvement. There's always something you can improve, and confronting someone in any situation is scary, especially when you're going about sensitive topics, which is why we feel like it's so important to practice it within a club setting. Our future goals are to expand this practice to teachers and the middle school. Just letting everyone know how to be able to confront someone outside of even high school and starting that education younger could maybe lead to less of these comments being made in general in the future. And over the past couple of years, in the district, we have had some racist outbreaks in the community, and our hope is that by spreading interrupter training, people will either think twice before making these comments, or others will stand up to them and let them know, hey, you can't say stuff like this, and this is why it's harmful to the community.
And another thing that we do in our club is elementary book readings. I was here last year, and I did a little bit of description about this, but we are just starting to do this again this year. We're choosing our groups and our books and what teachers we want to read to. But basically, for those who don't know, we work to diversify the material in the elementary school, and this can look like books that contain, that have students of color in them or are written by people of color. And it's to show the students' representation of other cultures that they may not see in the school and to also represent the students of color in our school, so they are seeing people that look like them. We have done this for several years, and we're really excited to do it again this year. We are trying to broaden our, like, the variety of books that we have this year, look for some new books, and we go through, we go from kindergarten to fourth grade, sixth grade. And so, we go from, like, difficulty levels, like, in the books. So younger elementary kids, students, we do more picture books and books that suggest bringing representation. And for older students, we bring in books that may, like, specifically talk about racism and problems within communities. And so, yeah, our end goal is just to bring representation in elementary school where it might not be already. And yeah.
Any questions? Very, very nice job, ladies.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Questions or comments?
Oh, I saw Susan and Jenny, and they'll go over.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation tonight, but also for your leadership in your school and in the district. I know that it's making an impact, and you're leaving a legacy for younger kids. So I appreciate the work that you're doing and the way that you are taking some difficult situations and making our community stronger for it. I am interested in hearing more about the interrupter training, so that would be something, I think, that could be really helpful. And, you know, just the little bit that you shared here, but maybe expanding that beyond your club to, you know, maybe some community organizations as well. That could be really helpful. And then I'm also wondering how you get funding for some of your activities, specifically the books that you purchase to share and read in classrooms. So I don't know if you want to share that?
Yeah, so for funding, right now, we rely on the members of our club to either get the books from the library. A lot of the books you can find in a library, we make it so it's accessible for people, and/or to buy off online or in a bookstore. We're always looking for funding from people. It makes it easier for us so we can have books on our bookshelves, and it's easier for people to get the motivation to go into classrooms. So that's something we're always looking for. And if you want to address the interrupter training.
So currently, I'm doing an independent study based on race and ethnicity, and through that, and through that, I'm actually trying to make a video resource for interrupter training that we can maybe put on the school website, just so it's more accessible. The ideal would be for us to do in-person training for teachers and go to the middle school so that students have, like, an actual real-life opportunity to practice this. And interrupter training really only takes a couple minutes. You can do it by yourself in your head. Ms. Sparks does it all the time, and it's just a good practice to keep in mind. So we would love to expand it outside the club and have that, like, space in order to just make sure that everyone's really getting the point of what we do and practicing it correctly, because the CLARA method does have a lot of, like, intricacies, because we're not trying to insult the person that we are trying to help. We're trying to get them to see why what they said might be harmful, but not necessarily criticize them. We want to de-escalate, not make them feel defensive. So, yes.
And our intent with the interrupter training is not to just do it once. It's helpful to introduce it, but you really need to practice to get, to know how to do it. It's really difficult at first. It's a really awkward situation to be put in and to put yourself in and be vulnerable. But we've done a lot of training, and it definitely gets easier, and it just prepares you for when you do have to, if you do stand up to people. And if you practice more, it makes it easier to stand up to people as well.
I actually had a chance to participate in this training through Justice Leaders, and Mr. Lampman ended up in my Zoom room and put me through the ropes. So, it was good. I learned a lot, but I was lucky enough to be in a room with him. So that was great. Thank you again. I just really appreciate your leadership and how you're extending beyond the walls of your own school into other, into other schools. So thank you.
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. I was excited that you brought them and to see it on the agenda. So I have a question. So I guess more of an idea. I work in Student Affairs, but as far as, so University of Michigan, Dearborn, I worked in the activities. They would do, like, upstandard training to, like, other student leaders. So whether that's, you know, the student government or just the presidents of each organization. But that's like an idea if you all haven't, maybe a start too. So you're getting those student leaders trained or even an opportunity to go to their group and, you know, give them that. Yes, yes. Tying it all in. And then, I guess, that you are aware of the hate speech statement in the books. So I don't know if that's a component that you all talk about as well, but just putting that out there. But, thank you.
Just one comment about the books. I didn't know if you were addressing the elementary book readings, but whenever we are talking about those and we are talking about sensitive topics like that, we do like to always mention, like, hey, either I am or am not from this community. Be sure to look out for, like, we're not trying to make these people seem like a victim necessarily. We're trying to educate you about problems that exist within this community. But of course, not like every person in a community will have the same experiences, and we're just trying to, like, make sure students are aware that, like, this is more just to be aware of representation and less about, hey, we like these people, we don't like these people, stuff like that.
One more thing. Welcome to our DEI committee as well.
Thank you.
Great. Just wanted to say, wow, this is, I'm really glad to see that you're doing interrupter training. So because I really believe it will help create a safe space in Celine for all students, because there's going to be missteps, you know, there's going to be comments that are made, but when you create an environment where everyone eventually, you know, this is just the normal response, and everyone has the tools to help de-escalate. I loved that you described it that way, because that's exactly what it is, in a calm way that is not combative. That's going to be really powerful, just for this district as a whole. So I'm really pleased to see that and excited about it expanding. We talked about doing something similar in the city, which I know you're part of the City DEI Committee, so this will just be great. It'll be community-wide interrupters. And then, just for the books that you're reading at the elementary level, just want you to know how powerful that is and meaningful to students to actually see someone that looks like them or see, you know, a child of color as, you know, if they're sitting there as a child of color in a room of students that don't look like them. It just, it means so much. I remember when I was younger, and there was one book my teacher read, and I was just like, that looks like me, you know? So that's really powerful, and I just want to thank you all for continuing to spread the love in the district. Thanks.
All right, well, I will back that up and say also, it is powerful, right? It's important work that you're doing, and I applaud you for it, okay? You know, I love that it's student-led, right? And so I think anything we can do where it comes from the students, it hits home. It really, it just works. So I'm impressed with you guys. I would like to know a couple of things. Number one, what year are you in school? And then the other thing I want to know is this. Based upon that, how do you guys, like, train? Because you're obviously very well-versed in this. So do you have a leadership council? Do you guys have a, you know, a next group of leaders that come after you, that kind of thing?
So basically, what we try and do for, I can talk about specifically interrupter training. We have slideshows that we make, and we do, like, supplementary research. We make sure we're citing articles. We make sure that we are doing it correctly. And we use that combined with our own personal experience to first walk students through it step by step so that they feel comfortable with the idea, because of course, like, we know the incoming freshmen, they've probably never heard anything like this. They don't have four years like us. We're all seniors, by the way.
So we lose, yeah.
Yeah. And so we always make sure that first they're comfortable with the topic, and then we go into implementation, which is why then we do practice within the club. After us, how we got elected was that the last year, there was four leaders who were all also seniors. So at the end of the year, they slowly just started reaching out to us and letting us know, like, here's what you're responsible for. We know you've been in the club, so here's what we're, like, trying to implement. And then we slowly just kind of transitioned. So we'll do the same at the end of this year. We'll pick students who we know are involved and, like, have been in the club for a while, and we'll just hand over basically our responsibilities to them and, like, walk them through that by giving them the resources we use this year for the upcoming years, just so we can, like, continue the legacy.
Yeah, I also think, I was, I've been in Students Against Racism since my freshman year, so I, and that's when it started. So I kind of got to be educated each year and then build up to the leadership position. And I think our club does a really good job of educating first and then building them up. And it's really, it's helpful when you've done it a lot of times, because then you can teach the people that are younger, because freshmen aren't going to want to talk about these big things as much as seniors are, especially us, because we've involved ourselves so much in it. But yeah, I think we take initiative by the end of the year to explain to them their roles, as Sia was saying, and let them know what the expectations are and how, because we want to keep our, the work that we've done, keep it going in the district. So we try to train them well. We're going to try to train them well enough to carry that on.
Well, thank you. Your preparedness and maturity, like, comes through huge. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate Ms. Sparks, wherever you are, for leading.
She's an appointment.
But, hey, I get it. But thank you. Appreciate it.
First and foremost, I invited the three of you here because I knew you are intelligent, you know, strong, young women who are really great leaders. And I think that presentation, really, I already knew, but I think it just showed everyone else. I know most people are talking about the interrupter training, but I think it's just such a cool and awesome idea, because I think there are a lot of privileged people in this community that don't have to think about race and don't have to think about racism. And I think giving those people, first of all, the knowledge that they, that this is happening and that, you know, that kind of cloud of ignorance is being popped, and I think that's something that's really important. But I also think it's really important to give people the language to be an interrupter, because I think a lot of people don't have that, and it stops them from speaking up even when they know something wrong is happening. And if you wanted to make a video that you could spread it out throughout the district, I will do whatever I can to make that happen, or just spread it however I can, because I think it's just a really cool thing to do. So, thank you.
Yes, of course. What I was just going to say is, I really like that you said that, because there have been situations where I think in Celine especially, when we're surrounded with so little diversity, which is being worked on slowly but surely. But sometimes we don't see our own privilege, and I think it's really important that we address that. Like, just the other day, I actually used interrupter training in a conversation with someone about affirmative action. And it's interesting, because they, you know, you never want to make the other person the villain in the situation, and most people are not trying to be harmful. They just need to learn. And so I think that interrupter training is an amazing technique to just show people how to, you know, maybe rephrase things or how to maybe understand the other side. So yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud of your passion and your poise. Very good job.
Thank you.
Got great things in your future, I suspect. Thanks, ladies. Moving on to scheduled reports, we'd like to warmly welcome our Special Education Department, Kevin Mussum, interim director of Special Education, and Monica Ellis, assistant director of Special Education. We heard there's a good video. We're excited.
Part one.
Part one.
Part one, part one.
Whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Yeah. First, we just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm Kevin Musson, the interim director of Special Education.
Monica Ellis, the assistant director of Special Education.
We also have some more people in the back that I wanted to stand up. If you're in Special Education, yeah, I'm going to point you out, and I want you to stand up and be a part of this. We've got teaching staff, paraeducators, speech and language pathologists, a lot of people with a lot of years of experience. Instead of talking about special education, we thought it best to actually show you this time and be available for questions and answers afterwards. And Ben, we want to thank you for your work on this video. It means a lot to us and our students and teachers. So thank you. So, thanks.
Hi, I'm Deb Budnick, and I am here to speak with you about our very early efforts with the inclusion program in Celine area schools. I had a long, very rewarding career in Celine and did a number of different things. Started Special Ed at the high school in October of '84, and then was tapped to get into this particular community with bringing in this program through a federal grant, the Inclusive Ed Program, where we would take the kids who were low-incidence kids, identified as low-incidence, and bring them back into the Celine area schools' family. I would have to say, first of all, that I think the reason in Celine we were so successful with what we did was because we had, I believe, the grant, this is a federal grant. It was almost a million dollars. And it was meant to get our program up and running. It was meant for us to go somewhere else where this was being done successfully, and in this case, it was Vermont. It was meant to hire specifically transition consultants that would be exclusive to Celine to work with teachers. And then probably even most importantly, besides our own training, it was meant for us to create these, what we call the summer institutes, where we were training and supporting the teachers, the teaching assistants, which at the time were new. Classroom assistants, really, had you walked into a classroom in Celine in 1985, I'm not sure you would have seen a classroom assistant. All of us are pretty much aware of what that looks like now. So as we trained classroom assistants and we trained these teams to wrap around support for each student and parent and teacher, staff, everybody, we also were looking at training, teaching assistants to be classroom assistants, not just focused in on that particular child. Because, and as time went on, we knew why. In Vermont, they knew why right from the get-go, and it took us a while to figure it out. But when you put another individual on, anybody, imagine if you were followed around all day long by someone. But when you put another individual on anybody, imagine if you were followed around all day long by someone. It would not be healthy for you, and you would begin to react to just that presence of that person. And not only that, but here you have this other set of hands in a classroom. Think of all the other needs in the classroom that are, are there, that this person can also be working with. So it was really a collaborative effort, as far as that went. I think one of the things that struck me, and I, I loved every, every part of it at the time, was that this was going to be requiring huge paradigm shifts. The paradigm shift really involved three questions. Um, our intent was never to take children from High Point or New Horizons and put them in the classroom and expect everything just to be fine. We knew that we had to change our learning, teaching culture in Saline for that to work. Um, so one of the questions that was pretty apparent from the get-go was, how do we make all classrooms a better place for all learners? A second question was, how do we really help other kids in our community and our parent community understand that um, some behaviors that we might think would distract totally from learning actually can be um, not a distraction, but something that moves learning along in the classroom for everyone. And then thirdly, and I, this probably was my most, my big takeaway from this time. Uh, I didn't realize how much, you know, programming for, for kids who had been identified as low incidence um, revolved around functional, everyday learning skills, you know, real world. How do we operate in the real world and, and, you know, collectively then make the world a better place? As I look back over this historically, as a historian, I am realizing the impact really this program initially had on Saline. This is the early nineties. Um, we had all kinds of trainings about learning-centered classrooms at that point. That became a nationally driven thing. And um, any, anytime you see a learner-centered classroom, I think at this point in Saline, you have to give a little bit of credit to this Inclusive Ed Program. Our, it was the first time too, that all of our teachers were kind of forced to take a look at this. We'd always had teachers who ran what we, we would call now a learner-centered classroom. But this was the first time collectively that as a district, we said, we want this to be intentional. And then if you were to look back at all the different trainings we had in the nineties and even the two thousands, and I would imagine now, you're going to find that if there's something that connects all of them, it probably has to do with it being, uh, you know, learner-centered and functional, based in reality, things like that. I think for me, I was, I was ready for the learner-centered classroom, because as a special ed teacher, that's kind of what you do a little bit more. You have the, that's what you're trained to do. We knew that we had to have skill sets available for teachers. Now, the question was, how do we make this actually work? And there was a social kind of end of it. I'm kind of simplifying this, but the social end. And then the IEP goal, functional aspect to it. So the, the social aspect of it really dealt with circle of friends, was, was the dynamic, was the process that we used. And so for me, one of the big takeaways was watching this process with parents. The first time I sat down and did this with parents, and I had seen it on video and seen this done in Vermont during our own institute there. And the beginning of that process is asking a parent, what are your hopes and dreams for this child? And it was very hard to get through these initially. I mean, I had to brace myself, because I just had never really thought about it. And for the most part, if you have a child at High Point or at um, New Horizons, really, it came down to, I want my child to have friends. I want my child to be part of the community. When we started actually using as a tool, the circle of friends, it's a concentric map. It's concentric circles. And so if you were to map in your own life, um, who are the closest people to you? Who are the closest, who are the people you see all the time? You know, the people you see all the time would be the closest circle, obviously your family. But then that next element, if you have a, if you're the parent of a child who has really very special needs, your second and third concentric circle out are professionals. They're doctors. They're psychologists. Okay, they're teachers. They're paraprofessionals. And maybe if you get six or seven circles out, you might have a friend somewhere there. So that struck me, and the hopes and dreams, and then the circle of friends process. Then the second thing that was uh really moving for me was the curriculum matrix. And I loved it because I like structure, and I, I know I need to get the job done. And so with that curriculum matrix, we would juxtaposition the, in elementary school, the daily schedule. Then we'd look at the IEP goals of the child. And we would find out where we could, we would put um, the goals in the course of the day. And for the most part, I would say usually ninety percent of those goals, we were able to embed. Now, this is elementary school, not high school or middle school. But in elementary school classrooms, the younger they are, the easier it is developmentally to embed a lot of these skills. Uh, one reason I've been passionate about this um ability for parents to make a choice about inclusion or a center-based program. Um, if you have a child that has no, who has no language, or very little language, and you want your child to learn language, believe me, the professionals in the, in center-based schools are doing everything they can. But it's not like having five other children right around that child speaking language, so the child can intuitively pick up what's being said, the syntax, the vocabulary, um, the innuendos, the inferences. None of that happens, or very little of that can happen in a natural way in a center-based program, with all of our efforts professionally. This has always been a community that has appreciated and supported their children. We know we love our children. We love them dearly. I think change is hard sometimes. Um, this was a period of time, I don't wanna be Pollyannaish about this. It, it required a lot, and there were people who were scared by this. Um, if I was a teacher and I hadn't had the intense training, for example, that I had had in Vermont, and then part of the trainer-trainers model, I could see, yes, you know, trepidation. People were fearful. But in this community, we also tend to pull together. You know, we do what's right here. Uh, I was thinking about this lately, and this change issue is currently, we have that going on even in Saline now. It's kind of a different iteration of the same question. And I know as a community, we will be able to pull this through, and we will become a better, more inclusive place because of the people who make up our community, uh, and because of our leadership. Our leadership in Saline is a strong leadership group.
Hi, I'm Kyle Erickson, the student service assistant. I'm responsible for Medicaid compliance for billing purposes, which generates two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand per year for the district, collect behavioral data for the department to evaluate our interventions to help teams make decisions on how to better serve our students, send out IEP invites to all families. In the district, log IEP documents and process record requests, process transportation and staff reimbursements, support staff and parents by answering questions to provide programming information.
Hi, I'm Alana Futz, the student services specialist for Saline schools. I have been with the district for almost twenty-one years, and this will be my thirteenth year in special education. Some of my responsibilities as the student service specialist include monitoring the special education supply budget, um, also the special education fundraising and young adult fundraising accounts. Uh, we have a new office assistant who I'm training and supervising. Uh, I also am responsible for setting up and maintaining all teacher and student accounts in our special education database. And I ensure that all documents are finalized and data is updated and correct. And in doing that, I also make sure that that data is flowing correctly into Power School. I work with the WISD when problems occur in the database. And I'm also the go-to person for staff when they have questions or problems. Um, I also set up and maintain all staff caseloads in both Power School and our special education database, which is PSSP. Um, one of my other responsibilities is being in charge of compliance and completeness of all special education documents, IEPs, REEDs, evaluation reports, et cetera. Um, I am also responsible for monitoring the upcoming annual and re-evaluation IEP due dates to ensure compliance. If staff have questions regarding the documents and compliance, they contact me. Um, another big responsibility is the people accounting for special education. Um, I've created some district systems to use along with the reports we have in our database to ensure that our information is accurate. Um, everything that we report directly impacts our funding. I also report all homebound people accounting data for both special education and general education students. And I work closely with the school buildings' office professionals, so that they have the data they need for their people accounting records. Um, if there are ever any questions from staff regarding people accounting, special education students, um, the offices contact me. I am also responsible for purchasing the staff materials and supplies, and that's for all of the special education staff. I work with the vendors. I process invoices for purchasing and also for the contract services staff. I also work with Karen Hervey, our district nurse, and purchase all of the nursing supplies, including the COVID PPE supplies. We are actually the office for our ECSE and young adult programs. Um, they come to us when there are general office questions. We also monitor their daily attendance and send the sub reports every morning. Some other few little details that I take care of is the young adult out-of-district services agreements and provide the finance office with the quarterly billing information, one oh five C agreements, Washtenaw Christian Academy yearly service agreements. And I work very closely with the transportation department, um, with the special transportation, and also with community education with our ESY eligible students.
Hi there. My name is Monica Ellis, and I'm the assistant director for special education. I have been employed in Saline area schools for about twenty-four years. I started as a special education teacher, and then most recently moved into the role of assistant director. Uh, some of my job responsibilities include supporting post-secondary transition plans for students, whether that might be work, college, or our young adult programs. I connect parents to adult agencies and resources. I am a liaison for our Michigan Rehabilitation Partnership with the state of Michigan. I attend IEPs on a weekly basis, and I get to know a lot of our students and families, which is a great part of my job. One of the other things that I do is I uh hire and evaluate our special education certified staff and paraeducators. I also look at the compliance for um, our transition portion of the IEPs, which is known as SPP thirteen. I'm very active in the buildings with providing behavioral support for our building teams. I'm also responsible for summer programming and homework assistance, and I work collaboratively with community education to do so. Uh, some of the things that I'm most proud of in this position and in this district is our exceptional staff. Uh, we have one of the most dedicated staff that, around. And I think that what they do in terms of programming is so unique. It's very creative. It's very individualized. And they're always looking for ways to improve and make the best experience for our students. Another point of pride for us is, is that we consistently have one of the highest graduation rates of our special education students in Washtenaw County. And um, we are very proud of that, and we continue to evaluate our programs to make sure that we are meeting those benchmarks. I think lastly, um, the thing that is most rewarding in this um district is to hear the success stories of our students and families. It's not unusual to hear from students that have graduated. Um, they come back and they let us know what they're doing. Or perhaps a family has reached out to tell us that um, we have made such an impact in their family's life by providing resources or helping them access um, community agencies. And I think those are the things that um are most rewarding in this position. And I'm just very proud of, to be a part of the Saline area schools tradition. And um, I look forward to working in the district and continuing to provide exceptional programming for our students and families.
I'm Kevin Musson, the interim director of special education. The role of the director of special education is the education and compliance of over eight hundred and ten special education students in our district. We oversee over one hundred and eighty-five staff members. We are responsible for a budget that is over fourteen million dollars. We are responsible for state reporting, where we pride ourselves as a district on exceptional compliance rates, including behavioral data, transitional outcomes, and IEPs. We provide opportunity for professional development for teachers, paraeducators, and ancillary staff. We hire and evaluate special education staff members. We are the liaison to central office, including board policy. We meet with parents, our special education advisory committee, and our PAC members, and make sure that we listen to all parent concerns and set up trainings accordingly. We monitor and allocate resources for all special education team members and the students to make sure that we're meeting their growing needs. We attend weekly IEPs. We are an inclusive continuum of services. The need of our students have changed dramatically over the last few years. As our numbers continue to grow, we adapt and adjust our practices to continue to meet the growing needs of our students.
Hi, my name is Savan Prasandak, and I am one of the early childhood special education teachers. We are preschool, and we provide services for preschool-age children that live in the Saline area school district. We be, we begin taking referrals for children at age two and a half years old. These referrals are made through a variety of avenues, including daycares, parents, pediatricians, the WISD, et cetera. We provide screenings as well as comprehensive developmental evaluations in the areas of developmental fine motor, gross motor, communication, cognitive, self-help, and social emotional development. Children may be found eligible for a variety of services such as speech and language, occupational therapy, social work, and physical therapy.
Hi, I'm Alicia Zach. I am one of the early childhood special education teachers. The ECSE classroom is designed to meet the unique strengths and needs of children ages two and a half years to six years old. Children must meet the eligibility requirements established by the state of Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education. The team uses a play-based curriculum that includes focusing on the development of individual skills such as communication, motor skills, and social skills. You might see us at circle time, out on the playground, doing centers, and just having a blast.
Hi, my name is Olivia Harrison. I am a resource room teacher at Pleasant Ridge. I'm excited to talk to you today.
Hello, I'm um, Beth Musson. I'm the teach consultant here at Woodland Meadows Elementary.
We have a continuum that includes life skills, services, resource room services, and teacher consultant services. This allows us to really meet kids where they're at in their development and lets us work really collaboratively as a team.
Our students that are in the life skills room, our students that um come in to work on life skills with the special education teacher, the school social worker, the OT, and the, and the speech path. Our resource room model, or students, is for students that um need a little additional support as far as maybe they are in the third grade, but they need um second grade reading or second grade math um curriculum, then we would teach that in the resource room. Our TC model is more of um, a service where we are supporting our students that are working in the, in their general education classroom with the general education curriculum. And then those students might come out to work on independent work skills with the teacher consultant. They might have um, reading intervention at that time, or um, test accommodations as well.
We also have our STAR program, which is our peer-to-peer program here at Pleasant Ridge at the elementary level. This is kind of like the very beginnings of what could eventually turn into the connecting club or the connecting program at the high school. Um, so in STAR, we teach kids all about inclusivity and acceptance. Um, we also have some really unique experiences happening. Students from the young adult program are using our school as a job site. Um, and they help us do some various jobs within our building. That's really helpful, and it's nice to see that process come full circle. Uh, Mrs. Phelps, who is our life skills teacher here, um, actually had many of the young adults that now are coming back to Jobsite way back when they were in preschool. So that's a pretty neat experience for them.
As a teacher consultant at Heritage School, I will work with students that have exceptional learning needs and benefit from extra support in the general education setting. I collaborate with general education teachers, working together to incorporate graphic organizers, visuals, and other supports throughout upcoming lessons to help all students to be successful. visuals, and other supports throughout upcoming lessons to help all students to be successful. I mainly push in, which means I support them in their homeroom class on grade-level content, while scaffolding as needed to work on their individualized goals. My students have goals in academic areas such as reading, writing, and math, and some students have goals such as executive functioning and social skills. I provide targeted reading intervention for those with reading goals in a pull-out model during team time. A critical part of my role is ensuring that students' IEPs are fully implemented and that students have the necessary accommodations to be successful throughout their school day. During district and state testing, I pull students to my classroom that have testing accommodations, such as small group or alternate setting, which provides them with a quieter testing environment. I also ensure that they have movement breaks, text-to-speech, or any other accommodations that their IEP encompasses. Being a teacher consultant in Celine area schools is a very unique and rewarding role.
Here at Heritage, we have four resource rooms in addition to having three teacher consultants. Students will often come to these classrooms to receive individualized support in the areas of need. Resource room teachers work with the students' general education teachers to ensure each child is getting a meaningful learning experience at their level. At Heritage, we prioritize a team approach with case managers and teachers communicating frequently to assure the provided services are appropriate. In providing specialized services, we aim to have each child included in their general education classroom as much as possible while learning at their level. Flexibility is key in this role, as schedules can change frequently and the needs of each student can be vast.
Hi, I'm Melanie Hensley, and I'm a teacher consultant at Celine Middle School and also a co-department chair at Celine Middle School.
Hi, I'm Rachel Smeltzer. I'm a full-time social worker at Celine Middle School and co-department chair for the middle school special ed department.
Teacher consultants push into the general education classroom and/or co-teach with the general education teacher to support student participation and access the curriculum using accommodations and modifications. In addition, in seventh and eighth grade, academic support class is offered in place of an elective class for those needing additional assistance and learning in executive functioning skills such as time management, note-taking, organization, test-taking strategies, and self-advocacy.
Resource room classes are offered for English Language Arts and Math in sixth through eighth grade. Resource classes are taught by certified special education teachers, which allows students to receive direct instruction and intervention in these content areas if they are performing below grade level.
Life skills programming is a resource room option for students who also benefit from direct instruction in functional or adaptive skills. The SMS Life Skills Program collaborates with the high school to provide students with robust learning experiences such as school-based jobs and community outings, in addition to academics at their level.
Additionally, the SMS Ancillary Services Team, which includes speech, social work, occupational therapy, and physical therapy, work with students and collaborate with staff in both general and special education classrooms to address various student needs throughout the school day.
Peer-assisted learning, or PALS, is our peer-to-peer program that promotes kindness, respect, and inclusion for all children within middle school. Facilitated by the speech pathologists, participants learn about different abilities as well as verbal, nonverbal, and alternate augmentative communication. By learning about varying communication styles and needs, students are able to better connect with peers and increase their social connections throughout the day. PALS students work together in classrooms, at lunch, and extracurricularly.
SMS uses the social thinking framework for common language to increase social cognition, teach, and reinforce expected social behaviors. Social thinking groups are available to students both within classrooms and structured groups throughout the day.
We still have a few more programs to go, so you'll get to see the edited version in the end. But we appreciate the opportunity and wanted to know if there was any questions that we could help answer.
That was really, really well done. Like the care and the love and the commitment. I just want to, all of us, I'm sure, want to acknowledge again all of the staff that are here and the staff that aren't here as well, that serve these students every day. Really, really well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brad.
So what comes through for me the biggest in this presentation, and just in general as an educator too, who works with special education educators and para-professionals, is how well special education staff members work together, right? Like there is just a special level of trust, a special level of understanding, of grace, of all of those things. And so I want you to know that that came through huge in that presentation for me. And it's something that I will, you know, lend my own experience, I guess, to is this idea that inclusive environments are beneficial for all students, right? And so for me as an educator, I'm always thinking about that. I've learned a lot from my colleagues who have helped me to break down, you know, best practices for special education students, but then became just things I did, like breaking assignments down into chunks, and targeted vocabulary, and essential learning targets and goals. And I really appreciate the fact that you spent this time with us to just give us a small glimpse into that because from a day-in, day-out standpoint, right, you know, you are creative and individualized. And so I want you to know that. I think that the reason why our families are so supported here and why they're so, you know, pleased with our graduation rates and all of those kinds of things is because of the extraordinary work that you do. And that is that. So I guess my last thing would be this. There are a lot of motivated people who are necessary to do these things, as you could see. How are we doing on staffing stuff? How are we doing on those kinds of things? And I'm giving you a platform too here.
You are, yeah. I can't offer $500 like transportation if anyone has a reference, but I wish I could. Right now, we have filled and have still some supplemental subs in place. We have a couple more interviews for some paraeducators still this week alone. So being such an inclusive district, we are met with challenges of a lot of move-ins, right? Our numbers continue to increase, and during that time, finding appropriate staffing right now is much more difficult. Before, I had a choice of 100 teachers when I was Director of Special Education. We always took the best of the best, no different. You see them sitting around us. And right now, it is much more difficult for us, even in the realms of a paraeducator, where I would pick from 30 or 40 people. Now, Monica and I pray that we look in the system and find someone that's interested. And right now, we have been very blessed, I'd say this year, to really hire some great people in terms of what is available and what is out there. So staffing always remains a difficult situation in special ed. Do you have anything specific? I'm just out of retirement. I'm trying to be cautious here right now. Okay?
I would say one thing that we've tried to do is really create an environment to invite our student teachers to want to stay here. And currently, we have some really excellent student teachers right now that very openly we're grooming, right, for the next step. So I think that's another partnership that we need to continue to explore.
So I saw one of my daughters in the video a couple of times. Shout out to Ben for capturing her. But I just, you know, seeing her teachers and knowing how amazing they are and the team members that, you know, weren't even shown, it just, I, so I have two daughters with IEPs, and one at Woodland and one in the early childhood program. And I can't say, I can't say enough great things about them and the program, and I really don't think my children would be where they are without them, without the staff and their support, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, on that note, now that I'm already like choked up a little bit, so a couple of things that I just wanted to note. When I came to Celine, Deb Budnick was in charge of the mentor-mentee program and really was, even though she wasn't my mentor, became a mentor to me. And I did not know this history. I knew that she had been a special education teacher, but it makes sense that Deb started this because her heart and her soul are students first, and she is just such a strong advocate and has been for my own daughter. So I just appreciate knowing that, that it's just, I don't know, it just, it makes sense that Deb was so involved at the beginning and has created such a legacy for others to come on board and to continue the vision. So that was really exceptional to see. I also just appreciate how intentional this all started and continues to be. You know, Deb, I think, mentioned in the history that this didn't just happen overnight, but it took a lot of careful planning, and I see that still. I see the professional development and the collaboration that's happening with all of the special education staff, like you even mentioned, even our student teachers who aren't officially on staff yet. But just you can see when you're in classrooms, and I've had the privilege of getting to see these, as the video said, angels in action, and there's just something so special about that. And when parents send their kids here, they know that they're going to be cared for and loved. So that was really clear. I guess the last thing I'll say without hopefully getting too emotional is that as a classroom teacher, I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of special education staff, starting in college, right? And one particular moment, I felt really alone with the student. I had tried everything, and it just wasn't working. And I think it was your wife, actually, who came and said, "You don't have to do this alone. We're here for you." So they work together as a team, but they also support the classroom teachers in a way that helps us to feel empowered and helps us to support students so that they can live their fullest potential. So thank you to our special education teachers, to our directors and administrators in special education, to Luana, who I started with at Houghton, and to each and every one of you that I've had a chance to work with and who have impacted kids. Thank you.
The last time I was a special education teacher was a century ago. Literally the last century. And I was wondering why I used to go home exhausted at the end of every day, and then I listened to, where's Luana? Are you here? Oh my gosh, I was listening to the list of things you did. And I was thinking, I used to do the district support and had to do the paperwork support and the medication monitoring and the compliance support and liaising with board policies. So I just wanted to say, all of the work, all of the spending that this district does carefully and wisely behind the scenes is absolutely essential to making these programs work so the teachers can work and focus on the teaching and not having to stroll around inside a dark vault to try and find the right IEP at the right time and get it back by the end of the day. It's hard work. It really is hard, challenging mental work, and I do appreciate every, absolutely every single thing you guys do. And I'm looking forward to seeing the rest of the video. Thank you, Ben.
I heard one of our audience members might be in the next portion.
Oh, he is. Yeah, he's in it.
I also wanted to thank you for having, as one of the goals that Deb Budnick noted earlier was helping the community to understand the value of our community of special needs and special education students. So it's great, it's wonderful. Thank you.
I had a question. So Kevin, so Kevin, first of all, thank you for coming back and helping and partnering with Monica and team. I was very pleased when I saw the email. But I guess my question is, what, in talking with Monica and the rest of the staff, what do you want to do first? I mean, so you've been away from this particular role for a little while, and thank you for being Principal Pleasant Ridge. What do you want to tackle first? Like what's on the agenda for the strategy over the next trimester or whatnot?
Part of the thing that we did coming back in was Monica and I sat and met, and we talked about our special education advisory committee and how beneficial that was to us in the past, working together collaboratively with families. So we went through the application process again, and we revamped that, and we'll have our first meeting the beginning of November. During that time also, we created a survey that we had done years ago, and we recreated that survey, and we've sent that out to our parents. So they've had that for the past two weeks. Right now, we've got about 200 parents that have filled out that survey, and that's given us good valuable information for what's going on inside of each and every one of our school buildings. And the data looks amazing, but again, we have very high standards. So when we're looking at this and we're seeing only about a 70% success rate right now for what we're doing for parents and training, that tells me that we need to meet, we've met with Michigan Alliance for Families. We're going to be reaching out and offering more family trainings, not just for our staff, but also for our families. So we're going to try to use that data and work collaboratively with our special education advisory committee. We typically try to create about three goals a year, and when we do that, we want to make sure that we have achievable goals, that we get the work done. So that's really been one of the goals that we see. The other thing that we were talking about is the entrance process into Celine area schools, creating pretty much a packet or a folder, welcoming our parents, providing them with mentors inside of this district, not advocates, but mentors, parents that are here to help them, to partner with them, and to kind of show them the ropes. So we know those are two goals right now that we have, and as we continue to look at the data, once they're done, they have until Friday, we'll continue to look through that to see what other information is provided and what we need to do differently. But right now, the numbers that we see due to this amazing staff are outstanding. Our parent communication's through the roof. We see these great things that we're doing. We see our compliance behind the scenes consistently, one of the most compliant districts inside of the state of Michigan, all right? And that's because of the hard work that they do. Without Luana and that laundry list of things that she does, it's not possible. So again, it's because of such a great team that we have, so.
Sorry, maybe I forgot this before, so I want to just circle back to this. But one thing that struck me when we were, when I was able to visit schools and see students in classrooms with teachers and teacher, paraeducators, is just the uniqueness of the services that are provided from, you know, early childhood through beyond young adult, right? And so a couple of things I noted were with the bond, some specific needs for our special education population, such as inclusive playgrounds and potentially an expansion of the Liberty Club, which is technically its independent part, but what we know is that you have all created such an extremely supportive environment for students that the wait list for students into Liberty Club is sometimes, it creates such a hardship for many of our families. So those things are really exciting. But the thing that I want to come back to is that in looking at the numbers, there are a number of students who are coming in as school of choice, and because of the uniqueness and because of the wraparound services that are available, that are unique in this environment. So how can Celine be a lighthouse, just as Vermont was a million years ago, in the 80s, as Vermont, as that school district in Vermont was for our special education inclusivity? How can we be a lighthouse to others so that there are opportunities for even more?
Right. I like how you're talking about other districts and the same thing is us being able to support them. We'd love nothing more to do that. You know, our numbers continue to grow at a rapid rate, and that is concerning. But ultimately, we have been available in the past for trainings. You know, we have created our own training mechanisms within our buildings. We don't send people out for nonviolent crisis intervention training. We have our own trainers. That's what we do here. And we have offered those services to other districts, along with some co-teaching strategies that we went to Las Vegas for a conference. We did go to the conference, Steve. No, and we did that, you know, to work and partner inside of, with others, and we worked with Mylan schools on some of those things. So hopefully, we can continue to expand maybe some of, you know, their abilities inside of those programs.
Now that you mention it, I am aware that the young adult program was started in Mylan as a model, modeled after this, right?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Yeah, well, bravo. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Allison, then Susan?
I was just going to say, I have some family members who had some undiagnosed learning disabilities that kind of slipped under the radar in their schools because they didn't have a special education program as diligent and as good as ours, frankly. And I think there's just something to me that's important, that's just a life philosophy, is equality versus equity. And so I think I've seen a lot of equity in the special education program in that we adapt the teaching to fit the learner as opposed to the other way around. And I think that stops students with learning disabilities from having to work twice as hard as everyone else to, you know, just try and get through the day. And so just personally, it's really nice to hear that in this district, it's made a pri- And so just personally, it's really nice to hear that in this district, it's made a priority of people to make sure that doesn't happen to people. And I think our graduation rates reflect that. Thank you.
Um, so I just, two things. I'm excited about, and I don't know how long you've been offering the, um, academic skills class for the Celine middle schoolers. I would love to see that and maybe there is like a community ed, not putting it on you because it's not special education, but, um, maybe for the general ed students as well or students with 504 plans. But yeah, I love that you all offer that like in place of an elective. I think that's great. And then speaking of high standards, um, I love that you are emailing and communicating with parents. That I've seen that, um, a lot come through and, um, you know, just, just that, um, partnership. And yeah, I appreciate that. So high standards, if you're not here interim forever, um, with hiring, I think we should definitely make sure that we have someone, um, that will keep that communication up. And, um, you know, we know that you're there and supporting and the whole team's involved. So I think that's great. Thank you.
We look forward to part two. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, everybody. All right, um, moving on to our second scheduled report, bond proposal update. Dr. Lott.
Okay, and we have a number of our core team that's going to be helping out with this presentation. As you've seen from just about every board meeting we've had in the last several months, we've been talking about the bond proposal as it is really important. And we want to make certain that, um, we've done everything we can to communicate out the benefits of this upcoming board, uh, bond proposal. And tonight, we want to go through a more detailed look at the history of how bonds have really helped accelerate the district to where, um, we are now with this path of excellence. If you can go to the, oh, oh, you know, if I can go to the next slide. Yes, I can. So again, we talk about the pursuit of excellence. We feel like that pursuit involves providing the best facilities, grounds and, um, opportunities for our kids. And so we keep that in the back of our mind as we're planning, as we're going through the process of really mapping the course for the district, um, not only in the past, but also, um, moving forward to today and in the present. One thing we do want to point out is that we, we obviously know the date of the election is November 8th. And, um, myself and a number of our core team will be taking personal days because we will be at the polls. We want, uh, the community to make sure they see us and that we are visible to support what we feel is an important vote. And we want everybody to exercise their right to vote and, and, and we want to be present for that. So we will be at the various polls around the community. So, next we're going to talk about what we call our proven track record. And that means that we are going to map out from what we have already accomplished, bond 2000 to 2015, to the proposed 2022 bond. So I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, next.
So as Dr. Lott said, uh, just over 22 years ago, uh, in, in the beginning of the 99, 2000 school year, I ran across a, uh, a blog that Superintendent Grayden had written in preparation for that bond. And in that year, we had just completed our ninth consecutive year of growing by 100 students or more. So the population within salinarian schools was absolutely exploding at that time. And the facilities that we had in place just simply would not continue to meet our needs. And so as a part of Project 2000, Celine High School, it was built. Uh, and that building through the last 22 years, uh, has housed, you know, over 4,000 students, has seen a, a number of students, uh, you know, academically prepare for the next phase of their life. Uh, that building has unbelievable academic spaces in it. It has unbelievable career and technologic, technological education spaces in it. It also has unbelievable fine arts and athletic facilities. And so that building has really served us well for the last 22 years. And, and kudos to the leaders of the district 22, 23 years ago who, who put that building on the radar for everybody.
Also at this time, very close to the high school, we've built, uh, or developed and built Harvest Elementary School, which houses young fives through third grade and is currently led by Principal Sickler. It is our only two-story elementary building that we have, um, with a great playground, lots of space for our students to learn and grow alongside of each other. And some fabulous spaces out back for exploring, um, project-based learning and authentic gardens and whatnot that the teachers have designed. In addition, we were able to add, um, the Heritage Choir and Band Rooms to continue to support the arts and continue to generate a lot of enthusiasm for our musicians. And you can see the impact of that because we start with this, um, our instruments in Heritage School. So you can see how that blossoms across the entire district.
And now the 2015 safe, warm and dry. Before 2015, we had roughly 12 doors that had access controls throughout the entire district. There were 12 doors. We didn't have any lockdown buttons. You, if you got, went to the office of Pleasant Ridge, you had to walk through the school to get to the office. By the end of 2016, we had access controls across the entire district. We had secure vestibules in four of the seven buildings. And by the end of 2017, we had secure vestibules in all the buildings. Cameras were added to all buildings. Uh, before that, we only probably had a handful at the high school. And, uh, and we also added the transportation communication system, which was a game changer for my department. Um, not being able to talk to somebody, a bus that was past Pleasant Ridge and Zeeb. Um, our, we extend out to Parker and, you know, Parker and Syle Church for the most part. You know, that was a game changer for my team and my crew to communicate with those buses. Sorry. This is just a picture of one of the secure vestibules here at Liberty. Roofs. Um, over the last seven years, we've put over almost a half million square foot under new roofs, of which I would say almost 75%, I mean, yeah, I'd say 75% of that is steel roofs. Lifetime of a steel roof is 30 years. With proper maintenance and upkeep, you can get 50 years. We're going to double what we did on our asphalt roofs when they were installed new. Boilers, uh, mechanical projects. So, um, everything we built in 97 with Woodland and Heritage and along with 2000 with Harvest and the high school is 22 years old, 25 years old. At the end of this bond, it'll be 35 years old. Um, so we did some upgrades with boilers, energy efficiency, um, with hot water heaters, LED lights. We started with the parking lots. We went to the gyms and band rooms, the commons at the high school. And now we're finishing up the classrooms at the high school and the middle school. And which will have that done in Phase Three. And a hundred percent of the district, except for outdoor athletic lighting, will be LED, uh, throughout the district. Um, along with building automation controls, building that, you know, that positive learning environment that we want. Uh, you know, I was looking, I look at the pictures from the private, uh, movie, um, from the special ed and I just see great learning spaces, really great learning spaces. And don't forget about Next Generation, what we did there, who attended the Foundation for Celine Area Schools event. You know, that Next Generation thing was 2014, 2015. We brought that to fruition through the middle school and the high school will be next. Doing a lot of great things in the classroom. Parking lots, um, again with a purpose. We've done this main campus. All the parking lots here have been changed or redesigned for school, for student safety. Woodland and Heritage, uh, the young ECSE program and the young fives, um, program here at the middle school, not young fives, but the ECSE program, um, you know, protecting them, how you come in, how you go out. There's sidewalks that keep them safe, keep everyone safe. High school, the same way, creating a, a, a pathway to the stadium. With speed bumps and, you know, controlling that piece of how people come in and out of those, out of that area. On 2022.
So now we come to a present time and we're thinking about the importance of what's next for the district. And so we've talked a lot about some of these next steps. We want to really equip our students with proper steam spaces, inclusive playgrounds, which was mentioned in the special education department report and video and, and so forth. So we're excited about this opportunity and we're going to talk a little bit more about it.
I think one thing we forgot to mention with that 2015 is that beautiful middle school gym that we will, um, reveal to the community on Thursday and I hope you all can make it. That's going to be great. Uh, they've worked really hard and it's come together and it's going to be an awesome space for our students and our staff and our community. Um, so we want to just go through these one more time here before the election and these big projects. And I asked the team to really focus on how each of these projects will impact students and the learning during the day, the community in the after hours and on the weekends. And then, you know, what is the potential fiscal part of each project that, that might be able to benefit us long-term as a district? I think I drew the easy straw with this facility. Um, I did put the presentation together, so. So, you know, from a student's aspect, obviously the middle school, uh, Liberty, Heritage, Woodland, all the, all the schools on this campus are going to be able to benefit from this during the day. It's a beautiful space. Physical education classes will be able to get outside. Hopefully, if, if they like, our, our building admin can plan for events that are outside at these facilities and just use a, a greener, better space that, that has, uh, stronger facilities to hold the number of kids that we have that go to school in these four buildings that are on site. Beyond that, we had, we talked about the middle school marching band and they're currently doing things in the parking lot and they're able to get on this space, have a real turf and really treat that as a transition from middle school into high school. Uh, when we look at the community, obviously this is just screams, community space. One thing that I know a lot of people are excited about is a potential walking path that goes around the entire, uh, parameter of, of all of these fields. Uh, we have very, very passionate pickleball tennis group in the community who have given us all of their thoughts and feelings and plans about, about pickleball and how that should look, uh, both indoors and outdoors. Um, and then of course, you know, the ability to host things here from a community standpoint, it expands the ability to program and, and bring teams in and, and host big things between this campus and what we have over at the, at the high school and Harvest area. From a, um, from a fiscal standpoint, we, it really, I mean, this, this is a game changer for rentals and the ability to generate revenue for our district. I think if this bond passes and we're able to build this facility, it will, um, really change the way that we look at how we rent things and, and what those structures, uh, become so that we can use it as a, as a revenue, um, generator and ability to really bring people into our community, not only for, for district gain, but also for the broader community, um, to be able to have people come into town.
At the high school, uh, much has been made about the steam centers that we intend to build at each of the buildings. And certainly the renderings that we're showing you here tonight depict that. In the, on the left-hand photo there, you'll see the brick piece on the bottom left is, is a proposed steam center. It's a rendering for that. And inside that space, there'd be instructional space as well as space for those groups to compete. Uh, one of the things that we're really excited about, about this particular model is that those spaces will have separate entries, so they will be open, uh, to people to use on nights and weekends as we know they do. Uh, but we won't have to open the whole building to do that. We'll be able to have separate entries into those spaces so that they can utilize them without compromising the safety and security of the other bill, or the rest of the building. The other space on the side of that is a rendering of a strength, uh, and conditioning center uh, that would be used for all students during the day and after hours as well. And if you've ever been to a basketball game, a cheerleading competition, anything in the high school gym, uh, one of the real drawbacks to our current setup is that when we use that weight room during a competition, it's incredibly distracting. Uh, we, we, we don't do that to a lot of our other sports teams and it's always been a real problem for us to have that set up the way it is. There are also some structural issues that have, have developed over the last 22 years with having all that weight on the second floor. Uh, and so having that weight room on the ground floor with its own entry will really allow us to address a lot of those issues.
Operation Center. This facility will, will greatly improve the traffic flow and the safety of student pickup and drop off at the middle school overnight. Once we are out of the mix and we can improve the drives and the, the, how we process students, how students get dropped off and delivered and how they get picked up. I think one of the, getting us out of this campus too allows the, um, steam center to take place at the middle school. Enhanced senior center at the middle school. And maybe we have a lounge that maybe bus drivers want to stay in. Maybe we recruit, maybe we're able to recruit some staff. You know, a stove, dishwasher, who knows? We, we do have Fun Food Fridays if you want us to partake. It's a great, great culture, great group of, great team, um, at the middle, at Transportation.
So as Kurt mentioned in the high school, that left picture is of the high school steam center, like a competition space. So you'll see there's, um, it's set up in, in the image as a robotics competition. Those are things that we hold to the same thing that, um, it will be useful for our clubs as they do that. But also like Anna mentioned, for our athletic adventures, bringing people to our community. So not only does the school benefit from that and our teams and our clubs, but also it brings people using restaurants, hotels, things like that throughout, um, our community. On the right-hand side is more depiction of our elementary steam centers. And those kind of are a double, um, use as well because during the day, we have an innovation lab, which is one of the specials that the kids go to. And so those spaces are more intentionally, um, built and designed to do the things that they're doing currently in spaces that aren't designed to do that currently. And then as well as in the evenings, we have throughout, you've heard from many of the, uh, different steam groups that go all the way down through elementary kids so that this, these spaces will be greatly used and then as well hit our, um, rental ability as well.
Technology. I feel like I could just say enough said right there. But, um, in truth, students use it in every building, every day, throughout the day. It's integrated into their curriculum. It's part of their lives. Even outside of school, they are constantly in their technology. And we need to make sure that we are not only providing them the technology they need, but also maintaining the infrastructure so that it's running correctly. We just saw a wonderful presentation from special ed. The technology that they use in their program is essential for those students. Uh, we have talkers. We have interactive display boards. The technology they use helps them get through the day and be inclusive in those classrooms. Um, our community, even when the school day ends, they have a need for technology. We have a number of events that we know of that run after school is out. They are expecting consistent Wi-Fi access. They are expecting to be able to, um, project their device during banquet and have their slideshows going on. Um, and then we've also talked about safety and security. All of that stuff requires technology. All of these vestibules, all of these badge readers, that requires the infrastructure to keep that up and running. And we need the bond to help keep those things going.
I feel like that special education presentation really teed us up nicely. Uh, we got to see some live video of students using our inclusive and accessible equipment at Pleasant Ridge. Um, because this is also a project on our bond and so much as we would like to scale this to all of our buildings because each and every student deserves to have an accessible and inclusive playground. And thinking about what that means, it means that there's equipment that is designed to be both safe and fun and peer-to-peer play so kids can be together regardless of what their needs are. And accessible in so much as kids can access the play equipment either via the pathway, the groundwork and/or the height of the, um, play equipment that is available to them. I think as far as what it does for our community, I think we, you know, to the question before, are a model of what it means to be inclusive. And when we have public spaces where our kids are playing together regardless of physical, social or emotional needs in a play space, learning, growing, having fun together, we are a model of what every school district should look like. And it says a lot, um, to bring that together in a space that's accessible from the potential Liberty complex. And for us to be able to say to adults and children alike, uh, this is what it means to stand shoulder to shoulder with everybody in our community and, and be proud of what we have, so.
Just really quick, before we take questions, I just want to do a little campaign recap. I know you like to hear what we've been doing and, and where we've been doing it. Steve, I know, met individually with the Celine High School PTO group last week. Um, one of, a couple of us met with the Sabes group as, on an individual basis. Uh, the last, last week, we were at two different, um, performing arts concerts. We were at the choir concert and we were at the costume concert. Then tomorrow, we have a meeting at the high school during Hornet, Hornet time with all of the seniors who will be 18 and eligible to vote. So we're going to give them a nice presentation and talk about the importance of, of voting. Um, tomorrow evening, in the hopefully not rainy 50-degree weather, we will be at trunk or treat. Um, giving out some candy and, and not promoting the bond, but just educating. And then what else do we have left? We will also be at the Performance of Clue, which will be the final weekend before, um, before the vote. So we, uh, we've, the last two weeks have been, have been really crazy. And then we've got a few more things in the last 10 days here. So that is our campaign update. Yeah, Susan?
Are you going to take vacation after this, y'all?
[laughter]
Well, if it passes.
[laughter]
Or if it doesn't pass.
Hopefully, it passes and...
That's good.
Good.
Good question.
Maybe stagger it.
Everyone is very tired of the late-night calendar invites.
Oh, okay, come back to me. I forgot that question.
My 19-year-old is voting in her first November election. She voted just a little while ago, but she, for those of you who don't know, she is a graduate of Celine. And in addition to being now in nursing school and having a great year, she also plays field hockey. And so, when she saw the rendering of Crabtree, she was like, "Oh, the middle school kids will get to play on turf" because that was always such a difficult thing. They would have competitions rained out because the fields would flood. The ball doesn't roll the same way on grass, especially, you know, even as much work as Rex and his team do, it's not always, it's lumpy. [laughter] It's just the nature of soil and grass. So, when she saw that, she just got really excited for the opportunities for kids coming up. Her lens was on field hockey, but in addition, just looking and seeing the potential for hosting, I mean, this community is baseball, right? So, baseball, softball. So, having the ability to host events in that way is really exciting. I also know, since I've been on the board, there's been some desire for bathroom access and concession access out at our high school facilities for baseball and softball. And I know I've heard from grandparents who have found it difficult to have to, you know, get in a car and actually drive to a bathroom. So, it's just really exciting to see the inclusivity and the forward thinking that has been our history included in this proposal.
Yeah, thanks. And I think Rex wanted, he actually sent me a text that I was supposed to mention this, is that with that 2015 bond, a lot of our high school facilities were given a facelift or an upgrade with part of that warm, safe, and dry. And these, obviously, youth middle school facilities were not touched, so they're due.
Oh, and by the way, I did get a preview of the middle school gym when I was on my tour last week and
That's amazing.
Knocked it out of the park. Wow, wow, beautiful. I can't wait for everybody to see it.
I remembered my next comment. So, I went to the Foundation of Celineary Schools luncheon and I was super excited to be sitting with the robotics group. So, whenever I sat, I saw, I was like, "Students, yay!" So, they showed a presentation, the students, and the foundation had supported them with space and that was part of it. And so, when they were showing the space, it made me so sad and happy at the same time [laugh] because I was just envisioning, you know, everything like we've talked about and, you know, what we're doing to provide that space for these students if the bond passes. And it was just really just interesting thinking, you know, about that lack of space and what this bond is going to be able to do for these students. So, I'm super excited and I'm going to tell everybody to go vote yes.
We had a couple of meetings today related to activities and athletic space and usage and how that works. And you would not believe the matrix that we have to try to put together to fit in athletics, community ed activities and try to get gym space for things that we're all trying to do and accomplish. So, it's nuts.
I just want to say, vote on November 8th and don't be complacent. So, another excellent presentation, but I don't think the community should be complacent and just assume, oh, this will pass, people support the schools, people always, who's not for kids, right? Go vote. Don't assume. Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll let Steve get back here. Moving on to our action items, our first action item is if I could please recommend a motion to approve the appointment of Leslie Hunley to the Celine District Library Board for a two-year term beginning December 1st, 2022, as recommended by Superintendent Lott.
I'm glad to make that motion. Kirby.
Brad.
Thank you, Michael. Discussion? I'll say something. I've volunteered with Leslie for years and I was pleased to see this recommendation, so wish her luck.
Let me just mention the process quickly too. There are a number of applications that came in and I met with Carrie Worella, who is the library director, to go over those applications. And then, based on criteria that the library board had set, selected Leslie to this role. So, that's how that process works. And so, we're pleased that she will be joining.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Steve?
No.
Go ahead. Yeah, Susan?
That was going to be a question of mine, so thank you for saying what that process is and that we had multiple applicants and, thanks.
Library's pretty great. So, good work. Okay, moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Item B, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the recommendations submitted by Jay Grossman, Director of Technology, for the purchase and installation of the Informicast Notification System at Celine Middle School, Liberty, Heritage, Harvest, and Woodland Meadows for a total cost of $255,000, $255,040 and zero cents. There's a comma there, yes. So moved. Jenny, thank you. Support. Jones. Candace, thank you. Any questions for Jay?
Oh, yeah, I do too.
I just want to make one note, that the majority of the funding for this is coming from the Security and Safety Grant that we were awarded this past summer. And so, that was a tremendous grant and I appreciate our fourth, right, to apply between you and Miranda and anyone else. Was there anybody else involved in that? Because it's really an exciting thing that we're doing this.
Curtain Rex also around the forefront of that.
So, anyways, so obviously, from the funding standpoint, I want to thank those individuals and that's, so this is from the Michigan State Police Security and Safety Grant, majority of the funding for this.
I just wanted to note, just to make sure, but I know that, I know for my own students who are at the high school that this is already in place at the high school, but I see that Pleasant Ridge isn't mentioned here. Is it already in place there also?
Yes, Pleasant Ridge was done first. They were the pilot.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yep. This is one of these great pieces of technology I hope we never have to use. Thanks.
Well, it is that we hope to never use it for the emergency system, but it's also for bells and paging too. So, those get used every day. Yes.
All right, moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Thanks, Jay. Moving on to our first discussion item of the evening, Policy Committee Meeting Update, Vice President Michael McVeigh.
Thank you very much. We had our monthly policy committee meeting. We convened at 5:02. We made some, a few updates. And by the way, just a refresher, the members of the committee are Trustee Miller and Trustee Estep. We made updates to policies regarding board compensation. That's coming to us to discuss on November 8th and then to vote on in December. We also added a few things to the consent agenda on the Fair Labor Standards Act, an update there, preferred vendors, visitors to campus, electronic fund transfers. And I'm happy to answer any questions about those if, as you're reviewing those policies. In fact, we'll get them to you as soon as possible. I'm looking at Betty. We'll get them out soon so you can see what we're talking about. And of course, there are two or three issues that are going to affect the board operating procedure coming up as well. In addition, we had a brief discussion about a House Bill 5703, which was passed and signed by the governor, where we must post a legislative statements on parental rights somewhere in this room, somewhere in Dr. Lott's office, and in every principal's office around this district and around every school in the state. That'll be done by January 1st. You'll see it in here then. Also, we touched very briefly on the controversial issues policy. Dr. Lott is going to reach out to Neola and Throon Law. And we also have some, we've asked the DEIAC for input. Now that they've got their new members, I'm looking forward to getting some feedback from them. This actually, though, marks the final meeting of the Policy Committee until January 24th, 2023. And I was, been the chair this year. I was the chair three years back and four years back and it's been my honor to serve in that role. And thank you very much. That's it.
That was short. I have a question. Why until January? In case others are wondering that?
Because we do not have a second meeting in Tuesday in November and we do not have a second meeting in December. And we have gone through all of the Neola issues. And I would like us to do, the next time we meet will be the second Tuesday in January, the second Tuesday board meeting.
Okay, yeah, yeah, guys.
So, that doesn't mean that the Policy Committee won't still be working on the backend.
Oh, yeah.
So, yes, so as
McVeigh.
Yes, Vice President, I'm like, I know your last name, Vice President McVeigh was saying that Dr. Lott is going to reach out to Neola and Throon. Those pieces will come back to us and Jenny and I are actively going to be working on that and looking at that language as moving forward, hopefully, something with the controversial issues policy with either editing. And there's a couple of great documents that we still need to see from Neola associated with the current policy, so.
I was just going to mention that we have plans to continue as information comes to us. It's still a policy that is one that we really would like to work through. As Vice President McVeigh noted, it's been a six-year journey so far and we'd like to see that come to the table sooner rather than later. But we also want to make sure that we get it right so that it's not continuing to come back as it has over the last six years. And the good news is that when Vice President McVeigh talked to Neola, this was something that they're very interested in working on as not just a policy for Celineary Schools, but something that they would potentially share with the other districts that they work with.
Thank you very much. And if I could add one more thing, my colleagues on the Policy Committee, there are a lot of items that came through that I thought would just be rubber stamped or whooshed through, but they said, "Wait, wait, 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 we have to do more research." And we had the time and we did the research. And so, when we recommend something for the consent agenda, you can guarantee that it has been thoroughly researched. And if something needs to come to a vote and a discussion, it will come to a vote and discussion in the proper sequence. Oh, my gosh, there was one other thing about that. But I just wanted to say thank you to them. In addition, when you reach the Fair Labor Standards Act part, please know that I did have a long conversation with Bridget Corey and Brian Bowes about that particular issue that you'll read about through the union's perspective. So, we do do our homework and they're quite right to say, yeah, the committee never sleeps. Thank you.
And because we won't be meeting, but also because we have a policy on how to make policy, you will be seeing at the next two meetings, the policies that we've been working on, either in the discussion or in the consent agenda, so that we hope that these become part of our policy in the December meeting. So, even though the committee isn't formally meeting, there is a lot of work that will happen before the end of December.
Thanks for that because I had a question on that. So, if you can just let us know what's coming for the agenda for November 8th and then the first week in December, that would be great.
Yes, our recording secretary will take good care of you regarding that.
Right. The other thing is, and Michael and Steve know this, we've gotten a couple of comments, requests for the agendas for the Policy Committee to be posted earlier. I think that would be great for Finance Committee too. I'm pretty sure ours go up that Monday when the packet goes up. And I know that Michael said that that was the goal for them as well, that when the general packet went up, the policy agenda would go up too for future reference.
No, just so you know, it's not just the goal. It's been the practice to post them around noon, but I'm not sure what happened this time, but not a problem. We will make sure they're out there. I will double check on Monday at 12:01 to see that they are there.
And, yeah, I would like to add that it is not required legally to post, even post an agenda for committees. So, just letting you know.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge that Susan is correct. It's just a practice so the community can see what's on the agenda.
Yeah, so that won't hit us, you know, with the OMA, right? It doesn't happen, that stinks, right? [laughter] But just, you know, and we want to keep that practice, right? But it's not going to hurt the board if it doesn't get posted. So, I wanted to thank the committee since that's what we're talking about and it's going to be our last, or it was our last today. Just, I really enjoyed working with Trustee Miller and Vice President McVeigh and how we were able to, yeah, something simple and bring it back to the table if we had questions. I appreciate that Vice President McVeigh reached out and worked with, you know, staff across the district who were either proposing some changes or we thought it was really important to get their voice. And also, the Fair Labor Standards Act, yes. Jenny and I were sharing our own experiences because it was based on putting, like, time for breastfeeding, you know, coming back from maternity leave. And, you know, Vice President McVeigh was like, "Oh," you know, like, "I'm going to kind of sit back and let you all guide the conversation." And so, I thought that was really admirable to, like, you know, put our voices forward in that conversation. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, thank you.
I acknowledge that I have limited life experience with that.
Yes.
Thanks. Difficult to go after that. Yeah, right. So, I'm appreciative of women in that. So, I want to make sure I clearly state, on behalf of Finance, and I'm going to speak freely here on behalf of Finance, but we have historically met the first meeting or the first week or first meeting of the month. And if we had to split those up in some way to accommodate anything that came your guys' way, I think I could speak on behalf of Finance and say we would work together. I know that Steve would want to be there or whatever. So, I just want to say we're a team and if we can assist you or support you in any way, let us know.
I appreciate that, but I'm just tired. And there is nothing, I mean, as my colleague said, that we're doing a lot of the homework behind the scenes. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, all set. All right, thank you very much. Discussion item B is our 2023 Board of Education Calendar. So, this is one thing that needs to be collaborated on with the secretary before the end of the year. As we know, Secretary Jones will be leaving us on November 8th. So, this is one thing like our superintendent evaluation that we wanted to pull up forward so she could participate. So, we collaborated on this document over email. I just, there's a couple of asterisks on it. So, March 2023 is a five-week month. The second Tuesday, or I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday would have been during spring break. I hope our staff and our board is enjoying spring break somewhere. So, the March dates were altered, so that's why that is. And then, the cadence of one meeting for June, July, November, and December transferred over in our recommendation. So, we just wanted to open it up for discussion and then this would probably go on consent next meeting so she could vote on it as well and sign off.
I am pleased with this calendar. I don't see any issues with it. Thank you for noting the spring break and adjusting that.
No offense, everyone should have some rest.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
All right. Any changes or questions? All right. Wonderful. Moving on, administration updates, Dr. Lott.
I don't have any specific updates tonight.
Wow. Let the bond presentation speak for itself.
That's correct.
Allison?
So, I'm just going to speed run my first three because they've all already been mentioned tonight, but if you haven't noticed, there is going to be an election on November 8th. I don't know if we pushed that in the... Yeah, no, in Celine, isn't that crazy? I've never heard of it. Unfortunately, I am 17, so I will not be participating. I do want the bond to be passed, but not enough to break the law for it. I'm very sorry. And once again, the ribbon cutting event for the middle school gym is on the 27th, so that's very exciting. I just wanted to say a Happy Diwali. It was yesterday, so Happy Diwali to anyone who celebrates. And I've been informed by the Chair of the NHS Blood Drive Committee that the blood drive is on Friday, the 27th. is on Friday, the 28th, not Thursday, the 27th. I was given a stern talking to about that one, so, yeah, that will be on Friday, and I will be giving blood, so if you see someone lying on the ground crying, it's probably me.
Any trustees with updates? Yeah, Susan?
Yes, so I came back from the beautiful, warm fall weather in Traverse City. So I was there at the MASP Annual Leadership Conference, beginning on Thursday morning because we had a committee meeting for the resolutions and bylaws. And then later that evening, we had the delegate assembly, in which I was a delegate and was able to vote as well. And then I had a presentation on Saturday, and then did a couple of CBAs. So, yeah, it was tiring, but energizing as well. I know a lot of, I didn't meet one board member who wasn't having a contentious election in their district, and so there was a lot of, you know, a lot of mentioning of that and how board members are, you know, dealing with things that keep focus away from the students, which is unfortunate. So just know that everybody's kind of in this situation, and so, anyways, I have a couple other things, sorry. So, one, the delegate assembly passed a new bylaw, and I wanted to tell you all about that. It's the inclusive literature. The Michigan Association of School Boards urges school media centers and building and classroom libraries to include literature that reflects the student population and broader society. This should include identifying and creating access to educational materials that reflect all races, ethnicities, religions, abilities, genders, sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions. I'm happy to say that after some discussion and a couple people kind of standing up for the importance of that, me along with a couple of other people, and so it was resounding support for this. And so I think, you know, that was super important, especially, you know, things going on across the country, and I think people were really excited about that. Secondly, I was going to mention the clinic session that I did, which was LGBTQ school board members talk sex and gender. We had, there were three of us, we had over 70 people attend. They were bringing in extra chairs, people were standing, sitting, and it was amazing. So we talked about kind of the sex ed laws, the sex ed advisory boards. I got to talk a little bit about my experience on the sex ed advisory board, and, you know, there was, I just have to put this in here, there was questions about forgery, right? And we're like, well, that's a state law. But, you know, they were talking about the makeup of the committee, and they're like, well, you know, can we get, you know, more, like, neutral? Like, how does that look like? We don't want to have somebody who's, you know, completely against or whatever. So I, I said, you know, finally, I raised up my hand, we were having conversation, and I said, you know, I said, it's okay to have people who have a conservative voice or who disagree. I said, that's why we have a committee. And, you know, make sure that their voices are heard, like our committee, aloud, and, you know, they're able to, you know, public comment, able to, you know, say that they disagreed, but don't halt the work of the committee or of the board and their work, don't hold it back, continue with it. And so, you know, I think people were kind of like, oh, okay. Because I think there's a tendency to, you know, like, pull back because they don't want to bring it because there's disagreement, like, you know, on the committee or in the community, but, you know, we still got to keep moving forward and making sure that we're still hitting those laws and expectations. So that was good to put that in there, like, y'all don't be scared, like, but you can still move forward. So they were super excited about our transgender and non-binary students' policy and how we incorporated the compass, and I think there were some that were excited about the compass. So, you know, and I think the important message as well was making sure that students' voices who are LGBTQ, that when we're making decisions based on them, that's going to impact them, we need to have their voices at the table. And so I think, you know, that was a super important message to get across. We had great questions. I was super excited, had a lot of people stay over who were interested in doing this work. And, you know, I was really excited about that. And with that, that 70 school board members in the state of Michigan, which could represent 70 school, like, school districts with those school board members that want to go back and make change to support their LGBTQ students and have the tools that they need to be able to move that forward, and I think it's wonderful. And so I'm really, really excited about that work. I think it may be a session next year. It may be a little more interesting, you know, dynamic, but, you know, I think people are needing that and excited about it. And I want to say happy LGBTQ History Month. I think, you know, that's kind of, I guess, LGBTQ students need to know that here in our community and the Selen area school districts that we support them, and if not, you know, give me a call. But, you know, I'm just proud of the work that we've done. I know, Candace, you're leaving, and so is David, and I just appreciate the work that you've done and the support that you've done here to make history. We made history with these policies and history by you all being on the board, and I just want to thank you.
All right. Thanks, Susan. Anyone else? I just had a very short thank you to the Foundation for Selen Area Schools for the wonderful fall kickoff luncheon that they had. It was Executive Director Stacy Rums's first fundraiser. I thought her, the trustees, and all of the volunteers did a fabulous job. So thank you to the Foundation and their constant efforts and their steadfast support of our staff. Really appreciate it. Moving on to our consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion to authorize the listed items as part of our consent agenda.
So moved, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. Support. Jones. Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. And closing items on our next agenda, Dr. Lott.
Yep, that's election night, so it's going to be a reasonably short agenda, primarily audit. Assistant Superintendent Owlesley will be the primary focus item.
All right. Well, ready for Miranda.
Is that the night that plant Moran are going to be here? Okay.
Yep. Okay. Now is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Seeing no students, we have one, Mr. Van? Oh, there you are. Hello. I was looking.
He gave you bowing and
Yeah, so Secretary Jones is definitely in control of the time.
I didn't have the yellow card earlier. He missed hearing his 30 seconds.
Oh, yeah. Yep. So what Secretary Jones will do is when you have 30 seconds left, she'll put up the yellow card. When three minutes is up, she'll put up the red card if you can just complete your thought, and then we'll be done. Thanks. Keep pulling through, you got three minutes.
You're up there?
Yeah, I think we can hear you. Keep going.
That's good now? Thank you. What I want to support, the update for the policy, I think that everything is covered, especially it's very important for the Selen area to follow this policy, and I have confidence of that. Thank you so much for the wonderful work, and Susan, and everybody else. You might use me next time for free because I love to do research, and that's one thing which is, please. And also, I want to talk to Dr. Lott. Use me at your disposal. I will be there for whatever I can do to let this bond proposal be passed. So just to say, this is great. The reason I support that, both of that, because of this is the great area, maybe we can say Selen area education should be the lighthouse of the nation, and very, very practical, I would say creative. So one thing I want to add is that we need to take advantage of here. We have land, one for people. Geographic location is the best, but we need maybe a little, even more aggressive or ambitious. The last five years, 10 years, which is safe, warm, dry. The next will be safe, super, and soft. So this is the proposal I give, but also I like to know that if possible, we can include in two things. One is that for the senior center, maybe we should create some program for the life learned teaching, because this area have a lot of, this is one thing. Another thing is a solid project is not just a tower and light, but it's almost everything technically. And I like to have opportunity to talk to our wonderful director, he just gave the J, yes, and more detail. If you look at that background of that, yes, the hex and shape, that is the solid project going to be, can be used for handicapped people, too, for special education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting, will be held on November 8th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I'd now like to please entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 8:33, with intent to reopen, re-enter open session at approximately 9:30 for the purpose of superintendent evaluation under Section 8A of the OMA. Under Section 8A, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session.
Can we take a brief recess?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. We'll enter into closed session as soon as we take a brief recess. Can someone make the motion?
I will support that.
Jenny?
I just need to take a quick break.
Got it. Second?
You start.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are in brief recess for approximately five minutes, and then closed session. Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We are in brief recess for probably five minutes and then closed session.
All right, we are back. There was a recommended motion to re-enter open session of the regular Board of Education meeting at 10:16. Motion made by Jenny, second by Susan, 7-0 vote. So we are now back in open session. I'd like to please entertain a motion to add a discussion item to our agenda, superintendent evaluation results. So move.
Second.
It's okay, Candace. Thank you, Susan. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 7-0. With regards to advice from the Michigan Association of School Boards, we'll do the procedure that we did last year, where I will read each line item's heading, and then our combined rating as a Board of Education, and then the roll-up rating. So on the worksheet with regards to governance and board relations, policy involvement, actually, this is on a scale of up to four, just to, ineffective would be one point, minimally effective would be two points, effective would be three points, highly effective would be four points. With results for governance and board relations. With results for governance and board relations, item policy involvement, three point seven one, goal development, three point five, information, three point seven one, materials and background, three point seven nine, board questions, three point seven one, board development, three point five seven, for a total combined score of three point six six five for that section, governance and board relations. For community relations, parent feedback, three point six four, communication with community, three point seven one, community feedback, three point five seven, media relations, three point seven one, district image, three point seven five, approachability, three point seven nine, for a roll-up score of three point six nine five overall for community relations. Moving on to staff relations, staff feedback, three point nine, staff communications, three point nine, personnel matters, three point five, delegation of duties, three point nine, recruitment, three point five, labor relations and bargaining, three point eight, visibility in district, four, perfect score. Overall, category rating for staff relations is three point seven five seven one. Business and finance, budget development and management, rating three point nine, budget reports, three point eight, financial controls, four, facility management, also four, resource allocation, three point eight, for a roll-up of three point nine. Instructional leadership, performance evaluation system, three point six eight, building level leadership, three point six eight, staff development, three point eight six, school improvement, three point seven one, curriculum, three point six one, instruction, three point six eight, student feedback, three point six four, student attendance, three point six one, support for students, three point five seven, professional knowledge, four. Category rating for instructional leadership is three point seven zero four. So for our professional practice rating, Steve is at a ninety-four percent. Other required components of the evaluation are student growth, weighted at forty percent, three point two five, and progress towards district-wide goals, four. Overall effectiveness rating, eighty-nine percent. Our evaluation rating criteria is as follows, ninety to one hundred percent would be highly effective, seventy-five to eighty-nine percent would be effective, et cetera, so this would be eighty-nine percent effective. Any questions or comments? All right, hopefully we didn't miss any. I'd like to now entertain a motion, please, to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two at ten twenty-three P M.
So moved. Miller.
Jenny, thank you.
Second, Gerbi.
Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned.